Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, we'll have our public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council during this time? All right, we'll have our declaration of closed session by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor McEckern. We have two closed sessions tonight. One is for the Airport Authority. It is anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9b3b, and the facts and circumstances relate to the SEC investigation. And the second is a City Council item, which is existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9a. It's the Carter-Burgis litigation. The names of the parties and the case number are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately preceding the seven o'clock meeting.
All right, we'll now move into closed session. Good evening. I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council, the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, we'll have any announcements out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor McEckern. We have two closed-session items, one for the Airport Authority, one for the City Council. They were both set forth on the agenda, and there is no reportable action with respect to either item.
All right. At this time, we'll move into our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our invocation tonight will be led by Reverend Dr. Benjamin Ellis, Pastor Ben, from Victorville United Methodist Church, and our pledge of allegiance by Victorville Police Department Chief Don Yoder.
Yes, Pastor.[130.16][130.16](Laughter) Since you're here.
Great. All righty. Father, we just thank you, we praise you, for this blessed opportunity to come before you, and we lift this meeting up to you tonight, and as well as these leaders, for we do pray for our leaders, and we declare them, Father God, men and women of authority. And so we thank you that you will lead them and guide them and direct them, Father God, in all that they do. We pray for this great city, this great high desert, and we thank you that your hand is upon it. And so have your way in this meeting, and we give you thanks. In Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible)
All right, we have a special presentation tonight. We have a proclamation that we'd like to present, and if I could ask Public Works, one of our employees from there, Dana Armstrong, to come forward. This is for Victorville Recycles Week, and she's going to explain a little bit about what we do during that week, and then I'll present this proclamation to her.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, once again, we're coming to the City Council and asking for this week to be declared Victorville Recycles Week. This is now the sixth year that we've been doing this. It's part of our overall effort to, I have some notes here, to celebrate America Recycles Day, which is a national event held on November 15th of every year, and we kind of did our own spin on it with Victorville Recycles Week. The focus of our efforts really have been to work with the area schools. As I said, we started this back in 2007. This is now in its sixth year, and what we do is we go to the schools and we try to encourage them to participate in a variety of activities, recycling drives, in-class presentations, assemblies, and they compete for points. We have a little friendly contest. We have a poster contest, a sculpture contest, and it's sponsored both by Bertec Waste Industries as well as the City of Victorville Conservation Division. I want to acknowledge Sharon Mitchell, who's here tonight from Bertec Waste Industries. She really does the bulk of the work in working with the schools at this point, and I have a few statistics that I think are fabulous. Sharon's been out working very hard, right, Sharon? Talking to all the schools, and so far, we have six, she has 16 schools signed up. She has 29 classroom presentations scheduled, 13 assemblies, and the assemblies could be from 250 to 400 kids per assembly. She has scheduled four tours of our materials recovery facility, and 14 schools are signed up to participate in either a CRV or newspaper recycling contest. In addition, schools can also compete for points by participating in our Community Cleanup Day, and we had six schools chip in, including one that had over 100 kids show up for our Community Cleanup Day. So it's a great event, and it's really a lot of fun, and I always like to tell the council about it, and also tell whoever is attending the meeting about it. So I'm happy to be here. Of course, I have one more thing to say. This being election night, I just want to say, it's been a fun and exciting election season this year, locally and nationally, and I want to say, if any candidates don't want to reuse their election signs, if they're too dusty to reuse for the next campaign, just remember, paper or plastic or metal signs can be dropped off at our Victorville Recycling Facility. We will take them, we will recycle them, and put them to good use. So when all those campaign signs come down, just make sure that they end up at the Victor Valley Materials Recovery Facility. And I do have a bunch of literature, as always, in the foyer, and I encourage people to pick up some information about our programs. Thank you very much.[433.87][433.87](Applause)
Well, thank you, Dana, and I appreciate that, because I have a lot of signs out there that I'm going to have to figure out what to do with. But I would encourage you all, because I know you're going to be back, to see all those competitions between the schools and what they do. And I did have an opportunity during the Community Cleanup Day to be out there with a lot of those students that were helping clean up the community, and we had a record number, I think it was literally 800 people, out helping clean up the City of Victorville. So it was a great, great event. So thank you for everything you guys do. Thank you. Okay, at this time, if I could have our city clerk present the agenda to the council?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby, and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council. There are two revisions that have been submitted for tonight's agenda. They are on Agenda Item 11. It is a response to the letter received from Briggs Law Corporation on this item, from the Director of Development, and on Item 12, also a response to the letter received from Briggs Law Corporation from the Director of Development. Those are all the revisions I have tonight, Mayor McEckern.
All right, we'll now move into public comment, and the first card I have is Dorothy Miller.
Hello, council members. I'm glad to see you're all here. I would figure half of you wouldn't be here because of the party tonight. Anyway, the first thing I have to discuss is my opinion that Mr. Dan Tate has financed all this election stuff, and I don't know why he don't take his money instead of pushing people on to the city council, trying to do everything he wants to do with the city. We don't need that. We need, let him put his money into the homeless to something that really is useful, the fire, the police. Put his money where it's going to do some real good. But no, we are backing all these people because somebody got taken by him, and we just get the money for our little friends, too, now. That's not right. It is not right. The man needs to go down the road and help people that really needs to be helped, not the election. He's trying to run the election and get whoever he wants in here so they can give him anything he wants with this city. This city is not for him. This city is for the people, all the people, not just him. And I was really surprised, everybody's invited to a party tonight, I don't know if they all know it, but it's over at Angela's house for Rick Rowley. So I'm not very happy about the whole situation. I feel Mr. Tate should put his money where it should be put, not trying to run this city. Thank you.
Frank Atkins?
Hello, council. Hello, everyone. My name is Frank Atkins. I reside in the City of Victorville, and I'm a candidate on the ballot for Victorville City Council, at least for the next couple, about an hour. Then we'll find out the results of that. I'd just like to say I kept my word, my pledge, and my principles, and ran a fair and honest campaign. I did the best I could with what I had, and it's been a great learning experience. I consider it a great start, elected or not. This time, I'm going to still be here and be a voice for the people, so you'll still see me, and I still would like to see Victorville move forward, and let's make Victorville a fun place to live, work, and play. And like I say, let's move forward with some good decisions, whoever it be that is seated up there, whether it's me. I love to work together with, if I'm up there, or from this point here, like to work together, and let's do good for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. All right, that's all the cards I have under public comment. We'll move into our regular agenda. Under the Library Board of Trustees, and the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there were no items at time of posting. Under the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, we do have a consent calendar.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Under the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency and the Joint Powers Financing Authority, there were no items at time of posting. Under the Victorville Water District, written communications, Agenda Item Number 7, this is a request to approve the annual purchase order request for Zenner Performance, Inc., for the purchase of water meters and radios for fiscal year 2012-2013 in the amount of $839,000.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Member Kennedy, may I get a vote? What is your vote? Oh, thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Under the City Council performing housing functions of the former RDA, we do have a consent calendar, Agenda Item Number 8.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Under written communications, Agenda Item Number 9, this is a request to award a contract to KNC Construction, Inc. of Asperia, California, for the rehabilitation of the NSP property at 13597 Copperstone Drive, Victorville, California, in the amount of $54,423.60.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 10 is a request to award a contract to KNC Construction, Inc. of Asperia, California, for the rehabilitation of the NSP property at 13605 Ironstone Circle in the amount of $57,577.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 11, this is a continued public hearing, called to hear arguments for and against approving the zone change of PLN 12-00016 for Victory Christian Center, and approve the introduction of ordinance number 2295. This time, I'll open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 11. I only have one card. Pastor Zorn, only if you needed to. Okay. Anyone else wishing to address the council on Agenda Item Number 11? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council for decision.
Mayor McEckern, if I might, I had asked for this continuance, this and the following item, based on the fact that the day that we were considering at the last hearing, we had received a complaint from Mr. Briggs on a similar project. I reviewed staff's responses to Mr. Briggs, and have reviewed his complaint, and believe that we should proceed with this project. I think staff's done an excellent job in responding to the issues raised by Mr. Briggs, and I think the record is now even better than it was before in terms of being able to fight off the potential lawsuits, if there are any.
All right, thank you.
I'll read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving zone change PLN 12-00016 to reclassify property from C2T, General Commercial Transitional, to C1, Neighborhood Service Commercial, with an environmental exemption on property generally located at the southeast corner of Asperia Road and Silica Road, Victory Christian Center. Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Rothschild, to waive further reading and introduce ordinance number 2295. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all for your patience on that.[1153.00][1153.00](Laughter) On Agenda Item Number 12, I'm going to step off the dais, and I am going to be very specific as to my reasons why. We are in a political season right now, and a very large and former supporter of mine has come out against me, as well as another member of this council, our former city manager, in three different radio commercial ads. And due to the amount of money that he poured into my election, I just, at this point in time, I feel overly biased to vote no on his item. So for that reason, I am going to step off the dais and not vote on this item.
I have a question. Who brought this forward? Was it Mr. Tate, or was it the city that asked for this?
I believe it's a joint application, but I'll let Mr. Webb.
Yes, it is a joint application. Mr. Tate requested it when he found out that his property had been, the zoning had been changed during the general plan update a couple of years ago. And even though the noticing was legal, it was a notice in the newspaper due to the number of properties and changes and people affected in the city. All legal, however, he did not receive an individual notice, which is the standard practice for a change that large. When the hospital was approved and people started looking at properties around there, he was made aware that his property changed, unbeknownst to him. So he requested the city to go forward, and take this forward. The zoning administrator, Chris Borchardt, who worked on the general plan update, and myself felt that due to the issues that would be done for anybody in similar circumstances, since there wasn't a specific reason why that individual property was changed, it was done in a group where the commercial uses were kind of poured into the hospital site, knowing there was a project there. And so, anyway, so we made it a joint project between him and ourselves to take it through as typical, as one of the typical general plan amendments that we do quarterly.
So would it be safe to say that he had a piece of property that was zoned commercial, and then without him knowing, it got zoned something else? And he just would like to have it back to the way he bought it?
Yes.
So he's not getting anything extra or special?
No. We had discussions about this situation, and felt that anyone within that time period who, if there was not a specific reason for changing it, you know, that particular property, it was done as just good planning practice as a whole with several groups of properties, that that 10 acres isn't necessary to make it residential on its own value, and that his request was reasonable. But yes, exactly what you said. The notice given was proper and legal, but rather than choose to fight it and dispute it over this 10 acres, which, again, was not studied independently, we just decided that it was, it was just good practice from the city's standpoint to support it.
Okay, and I need to make a disclosure that he is a campaign donor?
That's correct. As the record previously reflects, when we first opened this public hearing, Councilman Vias did go on the record to indicate that he is a campaign donor. That in and of itself does not create a conflict that would prevent her from voting on this item, as long as she discloses that matter, which she did previously on the agenda.
Question. Pretty much the same, along the same lines as Mr. McEckern's been threatened by this applicant, and so I'm not sure if there's a conflict of me sitting here and making a decision, an independent, honest decision, with a threat coming from the applicant, but would it be better for, from this perception point of view, that if I excuse myself from this dais?
If you believe that you have a bias that would prevent you from being independent and being able to vote on this matter without having some feelings or influence based on what has occurred, you need to report that bias, or let the record know that you feel that bias, the reasons for that bias, and then the safer course of action would be to, yes, to step down and not participate in the decision.
I just don't want to, I can be an independent decision-maker, no matter what the attitude of the person is out in the audience, whether it be an applicant or anybody else, but from time to time, we take a position on the caution side and leave, vacate the seat here, just so that nobody can accuse me, one way or the other, of being biased. I mean, I don't know how anybody could say if I decide to vote against the applicant, that he's then not turn around and say, well, you're voting against me because I ran a bunch of radio ads against you during your campaign. I don't understand, I don't know where that comes into play. This has never happened to me before.
You would have the perception of, I would assume you'd have a perception from the public's perspective of having a bias. Nevertheless, if you are able to differentiate that and the political campaign from your ability to make decisions on the city council as a member of the council regarding land use decisions, the record should reflect that, and you could stay here. It's really your call as to whether or not you feel like you can independently and participate in this proceeding without having your vote influenced by your feelings one way or the other about the applicant.
Here's the problem. Every one of us on this dais, except one, has been the target of his rather vicious attacks in the last few months. I mean, if we all leave, then only Ms. Vias would be able to cast a vote, and I don't think that's appropriate. I'm capable of making an unbiased decision. So I, I mean, you do whatever you think is appropriate. Just to point out, I raised the issue, I recognize it's out there, and to be honest with you, in all the 24 years on this council, this is the first time this has ever happened to me personally. I'm going to stay on the council. The election's over, so the election results are immutable, anyway. So I'm going to sit up here and maintain my position on this council and not be deferred by anything else.
Thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing on Item Number 12. Anyone wishing to speak for or against Item 12, please come to the podium. If in here are none, I will not close the public hearing. I'll ask the clerk to read the title.
Ordinance Number 2296, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving the zone change portion of PLN 12-00018 to reclassify property from R1T, Single Family Residential Transitional, to C2, General Commercial, with a negative declaration on property generally located at the southwest corner of Mesa Street and Cobalt Road, City of Victorville, and Dan Tate.
Waive further reading?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Vias, to waive further reading and introduce ordinance number 2296. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent. There is a resolution and a negative declaration that also needs to be acted on, Mayor Pro Tim. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy, to adopt Resolution Number 12-058 and the negative declaration. Motion carries with Mayor McEckern absent.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number 13. Again, this is a public hearing. This is a request to adopt Resolution Number 12-063 entitled, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville finding and declaring that the public convenience and necessity justify and require the granting of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to RTM Cicadian DBA Unique Non-Emergency Medical Transportation." I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on Agenda Item Number 13. Anyone wishing to address the council on that item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and return to the city council.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 14 is our consent calendar.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 15 is a request to approve the settlement agreement between Robert W. Barker, trustee of the Barker Family Trust, UTA, June 28, 1979, Barker, and the City of Victorville, settling the matter of the City of Victorville versus Barker et al., which is a condemnation case for the La Masonas quality road is a condemnation case for the La Masona Squali Road project in consideration to authorize city manager or his designee if he is not available to execute all the escrow documents and to further allow the city manager and city attorney to make requisite changes as approved by the city manager and city attorney if needed.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Agenda Item Number 16 is request to adopt Resolution 12-064 entitled, "Resolution of the City of Victorville Approving Submittal of Applications for All Cal Recycle Grants For Which the City of Victorville Public Works Department Engineering Division Is Eligible."
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda Item Number 17 is council committee reports. I'll start with Councilmember Rothschild.
None.
And I have none. Moving on to council reports, 18, discussion of possible action regarding items for upcoming city council agenda. Councilmember Vias?
Yeah, Michelle Medina sent me an email earlier this week about a code enforcement program in place in Rancho Cucamonga that she thought had a lot of merit and possibly a program we ought to look at and investigate and see if it might be a fit for Victorville that involves use of volunteers. I thought it had a lot of merit and I would like the council to agendize a staff discussion, staff report on that program and any thoughts you may have.
Yes.
Okay with that?
Councilmember Kennedy, it is my intent after the first of the year to have a series of meetings regarding priorities of the city council and some strategic planning as well. So it'd be appropriate if it's okay with the council to save that for that time as we discuss all the priorities.
Absolutely.
All right, anything else? All right, and so we'll move on to reports from staff and council members. Mr. Efferson?
I do have a, I guess it's a report, it's a report slash request, sort of. When we had the table of organization that came to the council about a month ago, it listed the holidays and we've always taken all the national holidays, except that I think it was four years ago or so, we furloughed our employees 10% of their time. So essentially, we were on a 980. Every other Friday, we worked, we furloughed that Friday and the employees lost 10% of their pay as a result. At the same time, we eliminated two holidays from the holiday calendar schedule. One of them is easy, it's the Friday after Thanksgiving, there's no need for it because we're always off on Fridays. There was an assumption at the time that one of those national holidays would fall on a Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, and so we simply wouldn't take it. When that's happened, it's always created some confusion with the public. We have most of our employees here and nobody from the public comes because nothing else is open. Additionally, our employees have trouble because their children, those that have them are off school and it can be difficult. So there's really no purpose in trying to have a furlough of two holidays if one of them is going to fall and create this issue. So I just wanted to report to the council and the public that unless the council has a serious problem with it, I'm going to go ahead and take the holiday, which is this coming Monday, which is Veterans Day. Technically, Veterans Day is November 11th, which is a Sunday, that's when the parade is. No, I'm sorry, the parade is actually on Monday. So unless the council has a problem with it, I'm going to go ahead and grant the employees a typical holiday, which would be this Monday, even though it wasn't in the table of organization. And then next year, we'll eliminate that goofy policy of trying to figure out which holiday we're not going to celebrate.
All right, anything else?
No, thank you.
Pastor Zorn, anything? Vias? Cabralis?
No.
The only thing I would report is I attended the county board supervisors' meeting today to recognize our supervisor, Brad Metzlfeldt. He's outgoing. As we all know, we're going to have a new supervisor come tomorrow, I would assume. And so, recognized him for his service to our county and working well with the City of Victorville. I think we've had a good working relationship with them. We haven't always agreed on everything, but we have been able to accomplish a lot. So it was just, there were a lot of mayors there and other city representatives as well as community service district representatives to recognize him for his service to our county. So just wanted to recognize him for that. And with that, we are adjourned.